Welcome to On the Ballot with Ballopedia, where we take a closer look at the week's top political stories. Ballopedia connects people to politics by providing neutral, nonpartisan, and reliable information on our government, how it works, and where it's headed. We're here to give you the facts so you can form your own opinion. I'm Victoria Rose, and thanks for being with us. Today, we'll be discussing the ongoing school board battles across the country and unpacking California's signature deadline and legislative adjournment. Welcome to On the Ballot. Between 2006 and 2020, Ballopedia covered an average of 23 recall efforts against 52 school board members per year. Those numbers exploded in 2021 as school board elections in towns and cities across the nation became battlefields for many of our country's biggest political debates. Last year, Ballopedia tracked 92 school board recall efforts against 237 board members. Were those inflated numbers a blip, maybe a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, or a sign of an emerging trend? Here to discuss the latest in school board conflicts is staff writer Doug Krenizel. Welcome to the show, Doug.
Hi, Victoria.
So we're about halfway through 2022. Has this year's recall efforts been similar to the huge spike we saw in 2021, or have things cooled off a bit?
It hasn't been quite as high as last year thus far, but already, the number that we're seeing in 2022 is similar or even higher than the whole year totals that we've seen in years prior. Halfway through 2022, we've now tracked 36 recall efforts against 84 school board members nationwide. Most of those have been in Michigan, leading the way with 10, followed by California with seven. And one reason why it's not usually uncommon to see those states in particular at the top of the list is because some states require you to have a grounds for a recall. You know, someone has to do something or behave in a way that is verifiable, and we can use that as a reason for this recall. Other states, you just have to gather the signatures, gather the petitions, pay the fees, and you can get the recall initiated and put on the ballot. And Michigan and California are both states that do not require grounds for a recall, which is one reason why we might see an increased number in those states.
This has been an issue the media has paid a good amount of attention to over the past year and a half. But how these recall efforts actually work isn't something that's exactly straightforward to understand, especially because the laws governing school board recalls differ from state to state. Could you describe how these recall efforts work generally?
Typically, petitioners must deliver documents to a city or county election official, and sometimes the members there are seeking to recall as well. These documents usually include the reasons petitioners believe the recall needs to happen, you know, like we mentioned, with needing a grounds to initiate a recall, and then signatures from supporters who also agree that there should be a recall election. If the petition is approved, recall supporters must then gather a set number of signatures from district residents to force the petition to a vote. These signature amounts vary, but are usually calculated based on the number of votes cast in that district for a specific office or a number of registered voters during a previous election. These signatures are then submitted to election officials who have to verify that, one, the petitioners reached the minimum number of signatures required by state law, and, two, that, you know, these signatures are legit, that these people are who they say they are. State law also regulates the number of days between approval of recall petitions and recall election dates. In nearly all states that allow local recalls, the final decision of whether or not to keep an official in office is put to the voters at the ballot box. Once you get your petition approved, get your signatures gathered, you submitted them, they're all verified, you made it, you got the requisite number of signatures, then you go to the recall election itself. In most states, like I said, in Virginia, you actually send the recall efforts to a circuit court, where then it's decided there. But recall efforts are started in a similar way there as well, with a collection of signatures and the petitions and everything along those lines.
So what's been the driving force behind this uptick in political activity on America's school boards?
Yeah, you mentioned the pandemic, and that definitely has something to do with it. Responses to the coronavirus, things like mask and vaccine requirements, reopenings, distance and safety plans. These have all been under the microscope since the pandemic began in 2020. Now, it does seem, from what we've been seeing, that the energy behind that issue in particular is kind of on the waning end, and then other issues are coming up to kind of take its place. And one of those is race and education, often referred to as critical race theory in a lot of these school board debates. It's also become a contentious topic. That includes the role of race in curricula, learning materials, as well as district-specific equity or diversity plans. And then finally, sex and gender in schools has also animated candidates and voters alike. This includes things like sexual education curricula and learning materials, as well as the usage of gender-specific facilities, so things like restrooms and locker rooms.
And were any of these topics more common than others and how often they came up in school board elections?
Yeah, so we were talking about recalls, and that's been a pretty small sample. So I want to kind of pivot us to elections more broadly, which kind of gets into some really cool research that we've been doing here at Ballopedia with these conflicts in school board elections. We've been tracking them across the country for about a year at this point. And as of the end of June, we had identified 873 districts across 43 states where candidates took a stance on at least one of these three hot-button issues that we talked about. And then altogether, these elections account for 2,621 school board seats. The most commonly cited issue has been race and education, brought up in 710 elections, followed by COVID-19 responses in 651, and then finally, sex and gender in schools at 438.
Those are really interesting numbers. Have we picked up on any trends that these debates are having effect on the outcomes of these races?
And one of the most interesting trends we've been seeing is that incumbents have not been performing as well as we are accustomed to seeing here with our regular research. So from 2018 to 2021, on average, around 18% of school board incumbents who ran for reelection lost to some challengers in the races that we were tracking in those years. Now, these conflict races are from a different sort of data set we typically use, so it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison. But we've seen amongst these races where these conflicts have been coming up, the incumbent defeat rate has about doubled to closer to 30% or even a little bit higher.
Let's provide some context for our listeners on what these numbers mean. Where is this data coming from?
Our research on these issues typically focuses just on identifying them and then gathering information about candidates and when the election is, how many seats are up, and then sharing that information. But we've now twice done deeper dives into the election results in these conflict races. So in November 2021, we did a batch, and then in April of this year, we also took a closer look at the outcomes of these elections. That was the first big school board election date of our current cycle. And so in those April races, which include elections in Missouri, Oklahoma, and Wisconsin, we identified 141 school districts where candidates took a stance on these conflicts issues. That represents about 9.7% of the 1,453 districts in those states, though not every one of those districts held the elections last April. But still, you know, it kind of gives you the scope of how many school boards there are out there. But it's still helpful to kind of have this view at the samples that we've been gathering. So over the last four election cycles, from 2018 to 2021, incumbents lost 18% of races where they filed for reelection. But in these April 5th conflict races, it was actually 33% of the incumbents who filed for reelection lost. So one-third, which is much higher than we're used to seeing.
Yeah, but it was similar to last year's, correct? It was 31% of school board incumbents who lost reelection. Does any of that have to do with incumbents deciding not to run for reelection?
Definitely, an important point. In total, 233 incumbents in these conflicts races on April filed for reelection, leaving 101 seats open, guaranteed to be won by newcomers. That represents 30% of the seats that were up for election, which is similar to what we are used to see among school board districts within our coverage scope, especially in even-numbered years.
So we at Ballopedia have been paying more attention to these school board races, but a trend we've noticed is an uptick in the number of candidates per seat. Could you kind of explain to our listeners what that means?
Yeah, so one of the things that we try to do to kind of gauge how active school board elections are is just kind of take in the total number of seats up for election, the total number of candidates who are running, and then kind of smash them together to see how many candidates are running per seat. And so this year, we've found 2.2 candidates running for seat in our regular scope of coverage. So those are the things that we've got the election results, the candidate profiles for on our website that people can see on their sample ballots. And that 2.2 figure is actually around 13% more than in 2020, when we had 1.9 candidates per seat. And it seems kind of like nitpicky to be talking with these percentage points, right? From 1.9 to 2.2 doesn't seem like too big of a difference. But whenever that candidates-per-seat value is over 2, that means that, on average, across the board, we're seeing more races where voters are going to have a choice between one person or another. Whenever it's below 2, that means that there's probably a larger number of uncontested races out there where someone's guaranteed to win because they're the only person who filed. So we definitely have been seeing an emerging trend, not just in our conflicts races, but in school board races more broadly of people turning out and running for office.
We still have half the year remaining, and schools across the country are currently out for summer break. But heading into the 2022-2023 school year, are there any trends or storylines that we're following?
One of the things that we're watching closely with our conflicts races is this sort of the waning out of COVID-19 responses as an issue. Obviously, this was a bigger deal in the past when these COVID-19 policies were in place in schools. But by now, most of these policies have lapsed or gone away. And so there's not really the same energy on that. What we've seen kind of coming up in its place has been race and education. Yeah, that's been around for a little while. But sex and gender in schools has been gaining a lot of ground as far as what we've been seeing and tracking with our conflicts research. So it'll be interesting to see, one, kind of how far that issue goes, and then, two, whether or not any new issues pop up. Another thing that we kind of want to keep an eye on, not just at our school board election results, but kind of across government as a whole, is this trend that we've been seeing with those incumbent defeats. You know, is this just at the school boards? Is this happening in state legislatures? Is it happening in the US House? How are incumbents doing? Is this, that's one of the things that we are going to be watching really closely to kind of get a better sense of what power incumbency has this election cycle and, you know, maybe moving forward. And then finally, with school boards, one thing that I'm really interested to see a little bit more about are the states that have been changing the ways you elect members to your school board. A lot of states, it's a nonpartisan office, so people appear on the ballot without any party labels by their name, anything like that. And then, you know, the top, however many vote-getters, win the seats. But one thing that kind of started to kick off last year was this push to make school board elections partisan. And one of the states that did that, and this is now their first election cycle with partisan school board elections, was Tennessee. And so I'm really interested to see sort of how those races pan out, whether it drew a lot more candidates into the race, whether incumbents are defeated at a higher rate, what effect it actually has when you switch from a nonpartisan election to partisan elections. And Tennessee is going to be the place to look to get a better idea about that.
That's definitely going to be an interesting state to watch. Thank you for coming on the show and breaking down these trends and storylines. We'll have to have you back to follow up.
Hey, everyone. This is Ballopedia's editor-in-chief, Jeff Palet. Are you a student looking for an internship this upcoming fall? Well, look no further than Ballopedia. We're seeking self-starting and civically-minded undergraduate and graduate students to join our team. With internships with the editorial, communications, external relations, and tech teams, you have the opportunity and chance to learn through an immersive and hands-on experience. Ballopedia's fall internship programs are part-time, completely remote, and run from September to December. To learn more and apply by July 15th, search ballopedia.org/internships or via the link in our show notes.
How can you have any pudding if you don't have your trivia? Hello, everyone. I'm assistant staff writer Paul Rader, and I'm here with some footnote facts. But before we get into it, see if you know the answer to today's trivia question. Which state has gone the longest without a pay increase for state legislators? I'll have the answer later in the show. And now to dive into that sweet trivia goodness with today's subject: state legislatures. Now, you don't have to research state legislatures very long to find out that they all vastly differ from each other in many ways, like the sizes of legislatures. We see itty-bitty ones like Alaska, which has both the fewest state House representatives, 40, and state senators, 20. Yet it is not the smallest legislature overall. That distinction goes to Nebraska, which became the only unicameral state legislature back in the 1930s. And today, it has 49 senators, which makes my OCD go a little crazy. On the other side of the equation, New Hampshire has the largest state House with 400 representatives, way more than second-place Pennsylvania, which has 203. You know, it's amazing they can fit that many state legislators into such a small state. That must be why New Hampshire also has the fourth-fewest state senators in the country with 24. Minnesota, meanwhile, has the largest state senate with 67 members. But how does the size of state legislatures stack up to the size of state populations? Well, it doesn't do so evenly. California legislators represent the highest average number of citizens in any state, both by senate and house, but it's tied for the 14th smallest state House with New Jersey and for the 18th largest state senate with five other states. North Dakota senate and New Hampshire's House represent the lowest average number of citizens in the country for their respective chambers. So as state houses get bigger, state senates do not always get proportionally bigger with them. For example, Vermont and Wyoming have the same number of state senators, but Vermont's state House is 2.5 times larger than Wyoming's. And Missouri has more state representatives, but fewer state senators than Maryland. And that does it for this segment of the trivia. I'll be back later with fun facts about the professional status of state legislatures. And now, back to the show.
Ballot measures are my day job, so I'm especially excited for this next segment. California has voted on 395 ballot measures in just the last 35 years. Here to discuss what voters will see on their ballot this year is the managing editor of the Ballot Measures Project, Ryan Byrne.
Hey, Victoria. Thanks for having me.
Can you give our listeners a high-level summary of the various ways a ballot measure winds up on the ballot on California?
Yeah, that's a great question. When Californians go to vote, they see the phrase "proposition" on their ballots. What voters might not know is that these propositions have really variable pathways to the ballot. I like to envision an organizational chart with the word "ballot measure" at the top. In California, measures can originate with the legislature or with citizens. So you have legislative referrals, or what the legislature puts on the ballot, and citizen-initiated measures, or what citizens put on the ballot. Things get more complicated from there. There are different types of legislative referrals, different types of citizen-initiated measures, and these different types have different requirements.
Well, then, to start, let's discuss the requirements of legislative referrals.
So in California, constitutional amendments require voter ratification. That's true in 49 states. So the legislature must put these on the ballot. There are requirements around statutes as well. Some need to go on the ballot for voters to decide. These include things like most general obligation bonds, certain tax and spending matters, and changes to voter-approved initiatives.
And what about the requirements for citizen initiatives? How do they end up on the ballot?
People can collect signatures to put issues on the ballot in California. These issues can be statutory, constitutional, or both. Citizens also have the power to initiate veto referendums. With veto referendums, people are collecting signatures to put a bill that the legislature passed and the governor signed on the ballot. For this reason, it's been referred to as a "people's veto." The deadline for both legislative referrals and citizen-initiated measures to make the ballot is 131 days before the general election. This year, that was June 30th.
So we have a good idea of what the ballot's gonna look like. This year alone, we had 53 initiatives filed for the 2022 ballot, and that was whittled down to six that made that June 30th deadline. Let's walk through each of those and give our listeners a brief rundown of what they're going to see on their ballot in California. To start, we have sports betting, which is gonna probably be the most expensive measure in California's history. Can you tell us what those two initiatives that qualify will do?
Right. So right now, California is actually one of 15 states where sports betting is illegal. So we have these two ballot measures, Proposition 26 and Proposition 27, which would both legalize sports betting, although in different ways.
Who is backing each of these measures?
So Proposition 26 is backed by a coalition of American Indian tribes. Proposition 27 is backed by gambling companies, including some of the largest in the sports betting industry, such as DraftKings, FanDuel Sportsbook, and Bet MGM.
And what are the major differences with the two legalization efforts?
Proposition 26 would legalize in-person sports betting at American Indian gaming casinos and licensed racetracks in California. Proposition 27, on the other hand, would legalize online and mobile sports betting. Both would require persons to be at least 21 years old to participate in sports betting.
Got it. And so one of these arguments that we've heard supporters of sports betting make is the benefit of tax revenue from this new industry that would be legalized. How do the initiatives differ on tax rates and revenue uses?
Right. So Proposition 26 would enact a 10% tax on sports betting at racetracks. Most of the revenue from that tax, 70%, would go to the state's general fund. The other 30% would be divided between legal and regulatory enforcement and mental health and gambling prevention programs. Proposition 27, like Prop 26, would also enact a 10% tax. This tax would be on sports betting revenue and licensing fees. 85% of that revenue would go into an account for homelessness programs, and 15% would go to tribes not operating sports betting. So those are the three main points of contrast. Who is backing these measures? What specifically would be legalized? And where would tax revenue go?
So returning to that point about the most expensive ballot measure campaign in California history, do we have numbers on what the campaigns have raised so far in this election cycle?
Right. So, you know, we still have four months until the election, but sports betting could very much be the most expensive ballot measure issued in the state's history. Last cycle in 2020, there was California Proposition 22, a ballot initiative to classify app-based drivers as independent contractors. That one topped out at $224 million. Currently, between these two sports betting measures, $256 million has been raised. As single measures, Prop 27 is currently $10 million shy of being the most expensive.
That'll be exciting to watch those numbers increase over the election cycle. Let's move on to another initiative that qualified that will decide on K-12 arts and music education funding. The initiative is sponsored by former superintendent of Los Angeles Unified School District, Austin Butner. How would this funding requirement work? And how does it relate to other education funding requirements in California?
The initiative, Proposition 28, would require the state to provide money to K-12 public schools, including charter schools, to fund arts education programs. The required amount is equal to 1% of the total state and local revenues that local education agencies received under Prop 98 during the prior fiscal year. Prop 98 was a ballot initiative passed in 1988 to require a minimum percentage of the state budget to be spent on K through 14. That's two years of community college education. Another way to put this, if we don't want to focus on the formula, is that the state estimates that spending will be increased by $800 million to $1 billion each fiscal year.
So that'll be a sizable increase. Another initiative that qualified for November is one concerning dialysis clinics, which has appeared on the ballot three other times. This will be the third time California voters will see this on their ballot. What would this initiative do? And who is funding these repeat initiatives?
Right. So all three, like you said, are related to dialysis clinics, including this year's. And all three of them were sponsored by the SEIU, United Healthcare Workers West. The 2018 measure was defeated with 59% of the vote, and the 2020 measure was defeated with 63% of the vote. In 2018 and 2020, the state's two largest dialysis companies opposed the measure. Both election cycles saw over $100 million raised by the support and opposition committees surrounding the initiatives. This year's dialysis initiative is Proposition 29. It would enact staffing requirements, reporting requirements, ownership disclosure, and closing requirements for dialysis clinics. For example, the initiative would require clinics to have at least one physician, nurse practitioner, or physician assistant on-site during patient treatments. It would also require clinics to receive the state's consent before closing or substantially reducing services to patients.
So this will likely be the same matchup as union forces and dialysis clinic operators, right?
Right.
And then another initiative that qualified for the ballot is an initiative to enact an additional income tax on personal income above $2 million by 1.75% and dedicate those revenues to zero-emission vehicle projects and wildfire prevention programs. Can you explain to our listeners the specifics behind that initiative and how much money it's expected to generate?
So that initiative, Proposition 30, is expected to generate between $3 billion to $4.5 billion annually. The 1.75% tax would actually have a sunset date of January 1st, 2043, or the year following, three years of statewide greenhouse gas emissions reduced by 80% of 1990 levels. Revenue would be dedicated to zero-emission vehicle programs, such as apartment and single-family charging stations and fueling infrastructure. The money would also be used for programs designed to incentivize zero emission school and transit buses and zero-emission agricultural and construction equipment. But as you noted, revenue would also go towards fire programs, including hiring and training firefighters, purchasing wildfire detection and monitoring systems, improving fire suppression in fire-prone communities, and supporting fire-related forestry management practices.
And then finally, we're going to cover a veto referendum, which was filed to uphold Senate Bill 793, which would ban the sale of flavored tobacco products. SB 793 was signed into law in August 2020, and the California Coalition for Fairness filed the veto referendum to overturn the law. Who else is supporting and opposing this measure?
So several tobacco companies are involved in the campaign to repeal the bill, including ITG Brands, Philip Morris, RJ Reynolds, and the National Association of Tobacco Outlets. On the other side, those who want to uphold the bill, former New York City Mayor Michael Bloomberg has provided $1.58 million to the campaign. Governor Gavin Newsom and the California Teachers Union have also endorsed votes to uphold the legislation.
What's California's record on veto referendums?
So from 1912 to 2020, Californians voted on 49 veto referendums, upholding 20 and repealing 29. The flavored tobacco referendum will be number 50.
We're going to turn, lastly, to a legislative referral that was put on the ballot on June 27th. Voters will decide on Proposition 1, an amendment to prohibit the state from interfering with or denying the right to an abortion and the right to contraceptives. Can you provide our listeners with some context on why this is on the ballot?
So within hours of that Politico leak, where Politico published a leak of Justice Alito's draft of Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization, Governor Gavin Newsom, Senate President Tony Atkins, and Assembly Speaker Anthony Rendon issued a joint statement calling for a state constitutional amendment for voters to decide in November. They described the amendment's purpose as building a firewall around a right to abortion in the California Constitution. Prop 1 was formally introduced several weeks later on June 8th, passed the Senate on June 20th, and passed the Assembly on June 28th.
How many other states will be deciding similar measures related to abortion?
This year's general election is the first to feature ballot measures to provide state constitutional rights to abortion. Besides California, voters in Vermont will decide on a constitutional amendment that says an individual's right to personal reproductive autonomy is central to liberty and dignity. Campaigns are also collecting signatures for ballot initiatives in Arizona and Michigan, which are designed to provide state constitutional rights to abortion.
And finally, before I let you go, how does this year's ballot in California compare to previous years?
There are seven propositions on this year's ballot in California, which might seem like a lot, depending on where you live, but that's about half of the past decade's average of 14 in the state. The last general election ballot with less than seven measures was 2014, when six were on the ballot.
Well, thanks for coming on the show and nerding out over ballot measures with me, Ryan.
Hey, listeners. This is Jeff Palet, Ballopedia's editor-in-chief, back with you. Here at Ballopedia, our mission is to ensure that every citizen has access to information to make informed decisions about their vote in every election. If this is a dream you share, well, you're in luck. Ballopedia is hiring and looking to add to our team of fast learners and creative problem solvers who are eager to work hard to make the world a better place. To learn more about our current openings, you can find them at ballopedia.org/jobs or via the link in our show notes. Thanks, and hope to see you here at Ballopedia.
Hello again, listeners. I'm Paul Rader, and, hold your breath no longer, I'm back with some more footnote facts. This piece focuses on the professional status of state legislatures. See, like you and I and everyone else in our jobs, many state legislatures can be categorized as part-time or full-time. as part-time or full-time. There is also a middle ground known as a hybrid legislature, and such a designation is based on how much legislators get paid, how much of their time is devoted to their legislative duties, and how large and compensated their staff are. So part-time legislatures, found in 14 states, tend to see legislators get paid less money, spend less time on legislative duties, and have smaller and less compensated staff. Full-time legislatures, found in 10 states, see the opposite trend, and hybrids, found in 26 states, tend to be in-between full-time and part-time in these regards. One thing the professional status of legislatures is not correlated with, however, is geographical region of the country. New York is a full-time legislature, but so is California and Illinois and Alaska. Maine is a part-time legislature, as well as Wyoming, Idaho, and New Mexico. And Florida is a hybrid legislature, along with Nevada, Virginia, and Delaware. So they're all over the map. But don't go away, because I've got one more trivia segment for you, where I'll talk about the compensation of state legislators and answer the trivia question I posed earlier in the show. But for now, it's once again back to Victoria.
Staying on top of politics can feel like a full-time job. Here at Ballpedia, our team updates hundreds of pages on our site each and every day. Nobody in their right mind would want to come through them all. And thanks to Ballpedia's newsletters, you'll never have to. We have over a dozen different newsletters, like the Weekly Brew, which provides a condensed collection of the week's most viewed stories from the Daily Brew. Here's one of the top stories from last week's Weekly Brew newsletter, which came out on July 1st. In June, legislatures in 19 states and the District of Columbia took action on 159 bills related to election policy. Forty-seven of those 159 bills were enacted. Of the 159 bills enacted upon this month, 37 involve voter registration or voter list maintenance. Thirty dealt with election audits and oversight protocols, and 28 covered absentee mail-in voting. 39% of those bills were concentrated in three states: Arizona with 21, New Jersey with 21, and Louisiana with 20. Go to ballpedia.org and find the email updates tab, or use the link in our show notes to sign up for the Weekly Brew and our other newsletters.
Are you tired of me yet? Of course not. I hope. I'm Paul Rader, and I'm back with one more segment of footnote facts. How do legislators get compensated? Well, in most cases, full-time legislators get paid the highest salary, followed by hybrid legislators and then part-time legislators. There are some exceptions, however. For example, hybrid Washington legislators get paid more than full-time Wisconsin and Alaska. And then Mississippi, West Virginia, and Idaho, the three most well-paid part-time legislatures, pay their legislators more than nine hybrid legislatures do. Overall, California, followed by New York, are the only two states that pay their legislators six-figure salaries. And at the other end of the spectrum is New Mexico, whose legislators get absolutely no salary whatsoever. Instead, they just have a per diem. Speaking of which, all but nine states have a per diem they pay to their legislators. In Alaska, all legislators, except those who live in the capital, Juno, get a per diem. These per diems vary considerably in amount and what activities might be paid for. And such stipulations you may even be familiar with as a part of your job, as per diems might partly depend on things like travel expenses and overnight stays. And all this is relevant to the overall debate on how much state legislators should get paid. Generally speaking, one of the main arguments against higher pay for state legislators is that it dissuades people from trying to be career politicians, which many voters see as easily given to corruption, and it costs less for the government to pay them. On the other hand, one of the main arguments supporting higher pay is that it gives state legislators the resources they need, and it does not effectively block people from considering state legislative office because of pay. And now, it's time to answer that trivia question I posed to you earlier in the show. Again, that question is, which state has gone the longest without a pay increase for state legislators? And if your answer is New Hampshire, you win. New Hampshire last increased its pay for state legislators back in 1889. You, dear listener, win 50 points. I don't know what you use them for, but go spend them on something. And that's it for this episode's footnote facts. There'll be plenty more where that came from next week, but for now, we will send this back to Victoria to close out today's podcast. All you, Victoria.
Thanks, Paul. That's all for this week's episode of On the Ballot. Thanks again to Doug, Ryan, and Paul for coming on the show. Make sure you don't miss an episode by subscribing wherever you listen to podcasts. We'll be back next week to discuss wave elections, Trump's endorsements, and more. If you have any questions, comments, or just love for BP, feel free to send it to us at ontheballot@ballpedia.org or on Twitter @ballpedia. I'm Victoria Rose, and thanks for listening.